Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, March 27, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Finance and Law Committee Reverend Burgess Chair. Bill 1491, Resolution for an Issuance of a Warrant for Invoices Totalling $4,092.23 in Favor of Diapolonia Engineering Related to Evaluation of Slope Conditions. Public Safety Services Committee Mr. Lavelle Chair. Bill 2018-1196, Resolution Establishing the Stop the Violence Initiative to Reduce Both Police Officer-Related Violence and Proximity-Related Violence in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 2018-1218, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances by Repealing Chapter 607 Firearms, Ammunition and Other Weapons in Its Entirety and Enacting and Adding Article 11 Weapons to the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances in Order to Meet the Public Safety Needs of Residents. Bill 2018-1219, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances by Enacting and Adding Article 11 Weapons, Chapter 1104, Prohibition of the Use of Certain Accessories, Ammunition and Modifications, and Chapter 1105 Authorized Prohibition of Large Capacity Magazines. Bill 2018-1220, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances at Title VI Conduct, Article 11 Weapons by Adding Chapter 1106 Prevention of Extreme Risk to Children and Chapter 1107 Extreme Risk Protection Orders. Committee on Public Works Mrs. Cale Smith Chair. Bill 1495, Resolution Granting On To Chippy LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense a Handicap Ramp with Handrails and Landing at Concrete Heated Sidewalk at 5126 Butler Street in the 10th Ward 7th Council District. Bill 1496, Resolution Granting On To Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct and Maintain and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense a Handicap Ramp with Handrails and Landing at 401 Wood Street in the 1st Ward 6th Council District. Bill 1497, Resolution Granting On To Nick DCO Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense a Handicap Ramp with Handrail and Landing at 2517 and 2519 Penn Avenue in the 2nd Ward 7th Council Bill 1498, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from Smart Growth America (SGA) to be used for participation in Safe Streets Smart Cities Academy not to exceed $8,000 for this stated purpose. Additionally, the City will provide matching funds not to exceed $8,000 in order to receive said grant funds to be used for the same purpose. Land Use and Economic Development Committee Ms. Gross Chair. Bill 1371, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the City Code of Ordnances that Certain Structures Known as the Carrick Municipal Hall Located at 1806 Brownsville Road, 29th World. Bill 1492, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application Under the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning, Article V, Chapter 911.2, Section 911.2.8.64 for West Liberty Elementary School for Authorization to Expand Elementary/Secondary School at 785 Dunster Street, Zoned R1D-M Residential Single Unit Detached Moderate Density District 19th World, Council District IV. 1493, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Article I, 416.10.D Public Right-of-Way Encroachments Permit Required Public Right-of-Way Encroachments to Allow One-Step Program Ramps to Be Installed Without Council Approval. Bill 1494, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Enter into a Fellowship Participation Agreement with Student Conservation Association of Pittsburgh Not to Exceed $15,583.78 for Fiscal Year 2019. Innovation Performance and Asset Management Committee Ms. Strausberger Chair. Bill 1499, Resolution Mending Resolution 149 of 2015 which authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with EDOC Technologies for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services to update scope of work and to add the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service as a signatory and at an additional cost not to exceed $79,760. And Intergovernmental Affairs Committee Mr. O'Connor Chair. Bill 2018-983, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a quitclaim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all the city's right, title, and interest if any, in designated city-owned properties to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh (URA) for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with theURA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and theURA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and theURA relating to subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties. This concludes the reading for Wednesday, March 27, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Wednesday, March 27, 2019. Councilman Burgess, who chairs the meeting, will be with us momentarily. I'm only going to begin the meeting so that we can do public comment, which is our first order of business. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind everyone here that the rules of council are very clear in that they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before our council. We do not permit profanity and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for your public, for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you will have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time will have expired. May we have our first speaker, please?
Morning, Council.
Morning.
Tim Stevens, Chairman of BPEP, Black Political Empowerment Project, Co-Convener of the Greater Pittsburgh Coalition Against Violence. Just wanted to stop in to thank you for your efforts. As you know, we've created back in 2007 the Greater Pittsburgh Coalition Against Violence in response to the fact that Pennsylvania was number one in the nation with regard to black-on-black homicide. As a result of that, we've created our 142-page document, 800-plus strategies. So when anyone proposes something that's going to help solve, not solve, but prevent some of these deaths at the hands of what's going on in our country, we're here to support it. So under my hat as the co-convener with Valerie Dixon of the Greater Pittsburgh Coalition Against Violence, we strongly support and lodge your efforts and we thank you for it. The efforts to ban assault weapons, I've never understood why anyone needs an assault weapon unless they're on the field of war. So we appreciate that and also the efforts to ban the accessories for those assault weapons. As a one who used to work in the mental hospital system for 31 and 3/4 years, one of the expressions we often used was of fear, of concern, and being in danger to yourself and to others. And I think the issue with the weapons is extremely important that some people are in an emotional state that if we can get those guns out of their hands, we'll probably prevent a death of a family member or friend or just someone in the community. So we support that effort and obviously from our coalition document, we encourage people to lock up their weapons so that our children are not using those guns on themselves and on their family members and others. So we lodge you. We also lodge the efforts of Councilmen Lavelle and Burgess on this effort to stop the violence and create a new relationship between our community and our police. If we don't get that handled, we will never have the peace that we all seek in our community. So we lodge all of you. We hope all of you will support these efforts that will lower the violence, lower the temperature, and increase the positive nature between how we operate as community members. So again, we thank you, we support you, and we hope everyone will understand the logic of your legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street for a few more days when you're faced with a potential loss of a mate from cancer. Yesterday, I spoke about the passage of time and I brought my cane and everybody recognized what I was talking about because when I was 17, in my teen years, my mother would read the newspaper and if somebody had reported something to the police and she would say, "They're going to be dead by tomorrow morning," and they were. That was a sign, a beginning of the progression that we've seen in our society to this wonderful day when these assault weapons apparently are going to be taken off the street. But also in the same passage of time, other relatives in the family went through what I discussed yesterday, and that was education paying off under the table to get into school. And I mentioned Donald Fox as a prime example, but there were Joe Dennis, another dentist whose name I can't even remember, Hilliard Dennis, Hilliard Dennis, a graduate of Harvard Medical School. I slept on the floor to save the money for a hotel when I went up to become a candidate for a master's degree of food technology at MIT. Hilliard Dennis went on to become a doctor. There's a history there because his parents, Bill Dennis, was the superintendent of Rowan Public School. He was a respected member of the community even when he got attacked by a member of the minority community and was really beaten to a pulp. But he still saw the importance of what? The link across all of these things is education and where do we put our energy? If we put our energy to constructive thinking, if we put our energy to use, then it's busy. We're busy and we don't have time to pick up craziness and assault weapons or any weapon to go against another member of our society. So congratulations on the legislation and thank you because I've seen across all of those different situations in the passage of my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. First, I wanted to start off by saying that when I look at the news reporters and the cameramen that are in here and I see, look, hmm, might be one black, one another person of color, all of them are white and they make the news, so they choose what is said in here. And there's times that I have come and I have said things that they will not report. But I tell you this, I want just to look at this, you news reporters too, where it says, "Citizens know Antoine Rose II was not an angel." But let's ask those two white men that Rosenfeld got made that that car beat up, let's ask them how they feel about, "Don't worry about us." Ask them two men after he beat them like that whether he should have been a policeman. You're talking about Antoine, he was 17 years old, understand that, 17. And how old was he when he was a policeman that beat them two men and then you have to hire him after he did? I'm upset, you know why? I seen the boy get killed and when I seen it, I said, "He was assassinated," and I started crying. You know why? He was running in Florida, cameramen and they don't allow you to shoot nobody in the back running. Then you got him on Marty Griffin, he got shot in his face on the side. Why'd he get shot at all? He was running. Please forgive me, I don't mean to holler this much. But see, now it's gotten so that you got this president of council who will put me out in a minute. He took it, he hollered at me while helping someone, always help the people and give them papers, no, but I told him, "Put a sign here. These are left every day if I don't pass them out." So don't tell me I ain't helping the citizens and saving money because they got it and they're using it. I'm upset, you know why? Because you white write the paper and if you get a elderly black man, they vote against our children. You know, O'Connor, do you know what your father did? Do you know that white kids never got in trouble? O'Connor had, when they got in trouble, you go to this one person, if they could pay, they never went to downtown. I listened to Katie K, you had Mangina, "Oh, you criminals up there, up in the hill, criminals." Well, if they are, they're getting caught because in your squirrel hill, them children don't get caught if they can pay for it, they don't even get written down. Do you understand we are never above suspicion? Never. If we're black, especially if we dark, now you get mad when I say you let Tim because he's light complected? You wouldn't even let Esther Bush speak. Come on now, color shouldn't make a difference and it shouldn't make no difference if he was 17, he was a child. You had a grown man.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. See no other speakers, we will now move to the roll call with Clark, please take the roll.
Mr. Cockhill. Ms. Gross, Ms. Harris, President Gross, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Cale Smith, Ms. Strausberger will join us by phone, Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. We will start off with the Finance and Law Committee, of which I am the chair. We do have a new paper?
Bill 1491, Resolution for Issuring of a Warrant for Invoices Totalling $4,092.23 in favor of Diapolonia Engineering Related to Evaluation of Slope Conditions.
I need a motion.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Need a second. All those in favor, certified by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. That takes us to the invoices. The invoices on the table, need a motion for the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any other conversation? No other conversation on invoices, all those in favor, certified by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. There is no interdepartmental transfers, there are P cards, the P cards are also on the table. Need a motion to amend, I mean, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Head of myself today. There's a second. All those in favor, any conversation about the P cards? No conversation about the P cards? All those in favor, certified by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. The P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, of which Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We'll take the first paper first and then we will take the next three together. You read the first paper, please?
Bill 1196, Resolution Establishing the Stop the Violence Initiative to Reduce Both Police Officer-Related Violence and Proximity-Related Violence in the City of Pittsburgh.
I need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
I would first like to make a motion to amend. There is an amendment before council members, so motion to amend.
Second.
Second, any conversation on the amendment itself? Ms. Harris?
Could you give us a synopsis?
Sure. The amendment essentially further explains the mission and purpose of the Stop the Violence Initiative as well as it legislates what sort of has already begun by having quarterly meetings within the advisory council. We actually held the very first one about a month ago in the eastern section of the city with a number of ministers from around the actual city itself, but now we want to put in legislative fact what we're actually going to be working on.
And? Can you just go over what you'll be working on?
Sure. This is an effort to coordinate all city, county, federal resources that deal with violence reduction and so that we're all talking in the same room and at the same time. There are monthly meetings that will be occurring and then there will be quarterly meetings with the larger community as well.
And then when the committees, will the committees come back to council or where do the committees go to?
So there's no formal committee that reports back to council, but myself and Reverend Burgess, we can certainly keep council apprised of the activities of the initiative.
Okay, okay. So basically, it'll just be a group talking about the violence.
Anything else, any other interrogative from Councilwoman Harris? If not, Councilwoman Smith?
I'd first like to thank Reverend Burgess for his work on this and Councilman Lavelle, and I'm happy to be a, serve as a cosponsor as well. And so I'd like to also make sure I'm included in some of these meetings and some of the events that are occurring in our, in our city. But I will say that I have been very critical of the gun bills and some, some other things that we've been doing here in the city because I think that although gun violence is down across the city of Pittsburgh, one of the things that I see across the city is a need for social services into our communities and we don't see that. What I really don't see is us engaging parents or guardians in terms of ways to avoid or to address gun violence or any kind of violence in our communities. I said to somebody, "We can keep kids from early in the morning to late at night with programming. If we're not doing some work in the families, we're failing these kids." And I think that that's been evident with the continued violence that we see happening in the community, although there's a decrease. I don't know how much of that decrease is related to the programming that we're doing and how much is related to the gentifications that occurred in some of our neighborhoods. So I'm supportive of this today, but I want to make sure that we are constantly receiving reports and updates of the work that's being done, not just with people that are on the streets, but people that have influence in the communities and with parents and guardians as well. That's it. But thank you, Reverend, very much because I know you've been a real advocate for this.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Harris?
I was just going to suggest under B that you would add the Pittsburgh Public Schools to be involved also.
I think that's a good idea.
So I'd like to amend the amendment.
Well, as long as it includes all schools, because we have a lot of kids that attend Christian schools and charter schools and Catholic schools and Baptist schools that also need help.
There's a provision, there's a provision that says that we can add representatives from local, state, local, state, county, and federal jurisdictions, so we don't have to amend it in order to do that, we just take it under advisement and we will add it in the practical working of the organization.
Okay. Because I think it would be hard to get every procheo and the charter schools would be easier.
We can go on and on about the Pittsburgh Public Schools and helps they need, but shut up.
Designed to be inclusive, not exclusive.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gross?
If I can, I'd like to work with Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess to maybe a little more clearly define the community roundtable advisory group and just to ensure that representation from southwest of the, of the river is, is part of the advisory group as well.
And make sure that we're included in that, in our opinion, it's not just somebody that they picked up off the street.
Again, our intention is to be inclusive and not exclusive and to have people self-identify.
And sometimes, well, sometimes the people you self-identify are exclusive, not inclusive.
So being that I have the floor.
Sorry.
I just, I want to make certain, and I don't want to stereotype or peg any community per se, but there are issues that we too share southwest of the river and I just want to make certain that there are people that, from southwest of the river that are participatory as well. Thanks.
Anyone else first round? If not, I'll make a few general statements to be on the record. Gun violence is a public health epidemic in our country and in our city. We must all work together to reduce all acts of gun violence, including homicides, suicides, domestic violence, mass shootings, and even police-related shootings. My prayers remain with all the victims of all of the gun violence that occurred in our city. Unfortunately, since I took office in 2018, there's been over 600 of our loved ones murdered in our city. Over 80% of them were murdered with guns and more than 75% of them were African-American. In order to reduce gun violence, we must do it comprehensively and we must do it together. We must invest both in prevention programs to stop killings from happening and we must also make it more difficult to gain access to guns and ammunition. And so today, we stand to do both things, to support prevention programs and to support the later bills that would make it more difficult to get firearms and ammunition. The Stop the Violence Initiative has a full-time staff that's going to be, that is dedicated to it. We will also add council staff to it so that we'll have the resources. We, we stand with the mayor and the governor, all the elected officials to work together on a comprehensive solution. There are things that the state must do, right, in order to change the way policing occurs in our region and we stand with our, in particular with Representative Ed Gany and Jake Wheatley. We stand with Whit Walton in terms of having a county civilian review board. We stand with them to do all these things, but there needs to be a...
Raven still two?
Huh?
Raven still two?
I don't know that he's working on, to the extent he's working on gun, on gun violence, I know that some of the state centers also, so I stand with all of them. But we need a, we need a vehicle to put all of these things together. And the other thing that the legislation calls for is a police-related critical incident protocol. And the other thing that the legislation calls for is a police-related critical incident protocol. When I was at my house over the weekend, I've received lots of phone calls as to what was going to be the police response. And certainly, all of the demonstrations that you've seen over the last few days show that there are people who do not feel that their life matters. They don't feel that their significance is upheld. And we have to do that, right? And one of my concerns is that there is no organized way. We do it informally, but there's really no organized way to make sure that we're all on the same page, and the same message is given out, and the same information is given out. That's something that I think Councilwoman Harris talks, I mean, Councilwoman Smith talks about a lot, is how information has to come to everybody, right? And so, what this group will do is create a protocol. There is United Cities United has a protocol that the document mentions that we will utilize for this effort. But it's a lot of work, because it's going to take all of us working together. And this is not, this cannot be, we've done all we can do, right? Our city has led the way. When I first came to council, I met with the police, and I started to talk to them about prevention programs. And they told me they would never do it. Now, twelve years later, all the programs that we've brought that they said they would not do, they are doing. And now in the paperhead said they have reduced crime in terms of ShotSpotter and cameras in cars and body cameras.
And gentification.
Also, the Maryland Thawty Assessment Model, Group Violence Initiative Program, which we are fully going to fund. All those things, even now, the police have said have stopped violence. But it's not enough, because we still have kids being shot. It's not enough. It will not be enough until we prevent every kid from being hurt. And so, and this is not seasonal for me. Hopefully, it's not seasonal for this council. When the cameras go away and the memory of a single incident is removed, this work goes on, because kids in our community unfortunately are being shot every week, every month. And so, this is not seasonal. This is not an episodic event for us. This is every day. I remember something, and again, I'm gonna take a little leeway and tell you a little story, and then I'm done. My father worked in a meal-related industry. He worked on the Allegheny Riverbank. He was a welder. He made barges, and he made tugboats. Welded them and made them. And they were used to move steel across the rivers. That's what my father did. And so, my mother never worked. And so, my father would work mostly seventy hours a week. He would work a full-time job, and then he would work the same job overtime, so that he had enough money. So my father worked a lot of hours. He worked out on the river in the cold every day, almost six days a week at least, every year, all the time, in the cold, in the snow. And so, when he came home, my daddy was tired, right? And he had two sons, and we were a little rebunk, rebunkished. And so, and this was true. My father lived with me toward the end of his life. This is true even toward the end of his life. My father didn't have to say much, right? If I was watching TV with him, if it was something he didn't want me to watch, he didn't say anything. He'd just look at me. And he'd keep looking at me until I changed the channel, right? If my father looked at me, I knew something was wrong. It was time to change. But there were times when we wouldn't, the looking didn't do it. I would still not be doing the right thing in his mind, or whatever he wanted. And so, every now and then, my father would have to say something, right? He would say something. And certainly, if looking at me wasn't enough, my father would say something. And then, almost always, we would do what daddy said. But there were a few moments of those times when my father would look at me, and I would not listen. And my father would say something, and I would not listen. And in those rare moments, after working seventy hours that week, or however long he worked in that time, my father would stand up. And when my father stood up, my mama stopped. When he stood up, it seemed like heaven and earth opened up. When my father stood up, something was about to happen, right? And so, symbolically today, Councilman Lavelle and I, we stand up. We're standing up and saying, "The violence must stop." It stops. It stops today. And we hope, hopefully, with the mayor and with all of council, we stand up saying, "The violence must stop." And we are going to provide the resources and the coordination. And why Pittsburgh? Because although, you know, Johnny Gamich, that happened in another municipality, but it was Pittsburgh that got the civilian police review board, right? Antoine Rose happened in another municipality, but the marching occurred in my district, in East Liberty, and in Shadyside and downtown. And so, we must lead the way. We must help organize this whole effort, right? And so, we hope to see money flow into prevention programs. We need state law changes. There's things we cannot do, right? We cannot change the arbitration system in our city. We cannot change use of force laws. The city, the state has to help us, but it has to be coordinated. And we have to go to Harrisburg, right? We talked about that. We're gonna have to go to Harrisburg. We're gonna have to... And so, last thing, these young people have showed us that they're tired. With network, had that saying, "I'm tired, I'm not gonna take anymore." And so, those of us who may get a little weary, they have reinvigorated us. They've re-energized us, and so we stand. And so, I thank all our colleagues for this opportunity to sort of talk about this. And we will do this together. It only works if we do this together. As a United City, as a United Region, we must all do this together, because every single life is important, and we must protect them all. Thank you very much for this moment. Any other conversations? Seeing no conversation?
Yeah, I have a lot of conversation, but I'll wait for the bills, the other bills.
If no other conversation, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay.
That was just the amendment.
That's just the amendment, okay? That's on the amendment. Now, on the original bill. We're now to the original bill. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That first bill is approved. Now, we have three other bills to sponsor the bill. Do you want them read together? Next three bills read together, please.
Bill twelve eighteen. In ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter six oh seven firearms, ammunition, and other weapons in its entirety, and enacting the adding Article eleven weapons to the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances in order to meet the public safety needs of residents. Bill number twelve nineteen. In ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances by enacting and adding Article eleven weapons. Chapter eleven oh four. Prohibition of the use of certain accessories, ammunition, and modifications in chapter eleven oh five authorized prohibition of large-capacity magazines. Bill number twelve twenty. In ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title six, conduct Article eleven weapons by adding chapter eleven oh six, prevention of extreme risk to children, and chapter eleven oh seven, extreme risk protection orders.
I need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Lavelle.
I will actually be very brief and then allow the main sponsors to do as much talking as they would like. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger. I believe she's on the phone, as well as Councilman O'Connor, for their leadership on this matter. I'm prepared to vote for this today. I believe it's the right thing to do. One, I believe that they have carved the path forward for the implementation of this, and so I'm grateful for their due diligence on that. But two, the main criticism that I've heard from colleagues and from others about why we shouldn't do this is that the state preempts us, is that the state doesn't necessarily allow us to do things. And Reverend Burgess, in his eloquent comments, just stated that we do need changes in state law. Now, all that's very true. But at the same time, as a body, as legislators, we also have the right to challenge what we consider unjust laws. We have the right to challenge laws that we feel don't go far enough in protecting the sentiency that we were sworn in to protect. And I believe we should do that. Keep in mind, this council has passed many bills that we have been willing, time and time again, to go to court over to say this is the right thing to do. We passed sick pay leave, because we believed it was the right thing to do. We passed source-of-income legislation that, as council knows, was recently turned over in court. But we believe it was the right thing to say people should not be discriminated against based upon their source of income, and not be given a decent place to live because of that. And we stood by that. And I think in this case, again, we are challenging and doing everything we can to say, as Reverend Burgess just stated, we're going to do everything we can on a day-in-and-day-out basis to stop people from being killed by any version of a gun. And we're going to do all we can to make it harder as well. And I believe it's the right thing to do. I believe it's the just thing to do for us to stand up and challenge the laws that don't go far enough. And so, because of that, I will be voting for this today. And if and when we have to go to court, I'll be ready to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Councilman Lavelle said a lot of what I was gonna say. I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger, who's on the phone, who her and I have had a number of meetings about this. I want to thank Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle for their prior bill, and Councilwoman Smith for sponsoring it. It's not just about assault weapons. I mean, if we are lucky enough to go through this process and we're successful, Councilman Lavelle and I had a conversation about the technical word use. We can apply that to daily violence that we see. I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for being a sponsor all the way through. I want to thank Council President Kraus, who unfortunately has the difficult job of almost every Tuesday morning acknowledging a mass shooting that occurred across the world. If you look at other countries, they make these changes right away. They don't look at anything. They say, "This is wrong. Let's make changes." Just happened in New Zealand a couple of days ago. I understand it's a different form of government here. I want to thank all of our colleagues. If you're abstaining or you're voting for it today, I think we've had a robust conversation. Councilman Coghill has brought up a number of great points, Councilwoman Harris, and Councilwoman Smith. We were not lobbying people on how they should vote. I think every council member that's sitting at this table believes that we need to do something about gun violence. Are we taking a different approach than others might have? Yes. And I think that's more the debate whether we're doing this approach opposed to a separate approach. I think it's the right thing to do as well. But I want to thank all of my colleagues for this conversation. I want to thank residents of Pittsburgh. We got a number of letters in support of, you know, enough is enough. Let's get these guns off the streets. I want to thank Ceasefire. I want to thank Moms Demand Action. I want to even thank our law department. You know, we discussed with them these bills, but, you know, they have a tough job as well. I want to thank Dan Booker and the staff at Reed Smith. And I also wanted to thank my staff. You know, a lot of the times when we pass these bills, we don't thank staffs enough. But my staff and Councilwoman Strasburger's staff were here very long hours rewriting these bills to give us a path forward that we believe we're going to win. And I just really, that's about all I want to say. I know there's going to be a lengthy conversation, but I want to thank the council members that are sticking to this, because it is the right thing to do. I also want to thank the mayor for his leadership on this. He got a coalition of state leaders to help support us. And I think it's the right fight to have, and it's the right time to have this fight. It should have been done twenty years ago, when we see mass shootings and other shootings occur. But, you know, it hasn't. So, we're a city, as the Reverend said, that's going to stand up and lead, and we're going to take this to whatever level we have to, but it's the right thing to do. So, I'll leave it at that. I want to thank everybody, and I'm good.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Councilwoman?
I don't know if she wanted to make a comment.
Okay, I'm not sure. Okay. Okay. Long as you have that opportunity as a co-sponsor. All right.
Thank you. Yeah, I do not need to make a statement at this time.
Congratulations.
Yes. On a separate note, we are congratulating you and can't wait to play with the baby.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
So, I also want to thank my colleagues. I do think that Councilman O'Connor has done an exceptional job of communicating and working with all of us. And I think Councilwoman Strasburger has done the same, coming in new. This was not an easy thing to do. And I think that they've just done a really good job of communicating, even though I'm not supportive. I am supportive overall of the idea, as I mentioned before. But we have challenged this before. We have challenged gun laws. We have done things and made statements and took a stand before. That's why now we are unable to, because that was the last order that we had, was that we weren't unable to do so. And so, it's not as if we haven't done it before. Most of us here, I think all of us here, have voted in favor of gun laws in the past. So, we all know the outcome of those votes. And honestly, I mean, I think it's great to take a stand and go to court. I mean, I think it'd be great if we want to do these kind of things, and you want to step out of what the role of a council member is, put the money up and pay for it so the taxpayers aren't. I think that would be a great thing. Pay for it personally. You want to make a statement, do it on your own dime, not on the taxpayers. I would definitely think that that would be a great thing. Maybe we actually introduce legislation to do something like that. Because we seem to oftentimes step out of our comfort, out of our area of jurisdiction. And so, for me, it's not that I disagree with the idea that we need to do something with gun laws. I've actually thought so, and I voted that way in the past. What I also think is that it should have happened, as you mentioned, years ago. We're not banning the guns that shoot African-Americans and minorities and Latino, the Latino community, which is disproportionately affected by these types of gun laws. They're disproportionately arrested. And I think you want to know why people feel like their lives don't matter? We do things like this. We're waiting for the first time that there was a mass murder in a predominantly white community, and we make sure that we put in legislation to ban guns. But meanwhile, people have been killed every single week in the city, and we have done nothing like that. Nothing. And so, I think if you want to make people feel valued, you have to treat people equally and fairly across the board, not just when one tragedy happens, which was horrific and is horrific. And I think a lot of people still feel the pain of what happened in Squirrel Hill. And it was, it is a tragedy. But there's tragedies that happen every single week, and we don't have the same response. And we have not had the same response. And so, for me, I have said this since from the very beginning, although I think that we should do something, a will of council could have done this without costing the taxpayer money. It would probably have the same effect. Nothing. We're not going to be able to enforce these laws. We're never going to enforce these laws. It's a nice symbol and symbolic gesture to say that we care, and I think everyone here does care. I think everyone here saw the pain and felt the pain of what happened in Squirrel Hill. And I think we saw our colleagues really struggling with, you know, a lot of emotion during that time. And so, we wanted to be supportive and wanted to help. But I see families every week suffering with these kinds of issues. And it's hard to think that we've just not had the same response. And I think although we all care, we're not having the same response. And as I said, what happens in the African-American, the minority community every week, we're not banning the guns that a lot of families are suffering. And they're mostly killed by handguns, not by, and actually, I think it's even knives now, not even any type of guns. And so, I think that although we're watching people suffering, we're not banning those guns that are killing them. We're banning the guns that they get arrested for. And so, they're probably going to be disproportionately affected by, if it ever were enforceable or were enforced, they would be arrested, they would be affected disproportionately by the arrest. I think that sends a message to the African-American community, and it's not about caring.
Very much. Ms. Harris.
A lot of us can vote different ways at this table because of our feelings. And I think that is what's happening today. Everybody feels they're not wrong on how the vote is going. However, I will be voting no today. And the reason why is that back in ninety-three, the same type of legislation came forward, and the taxpayers had to really pay out if anyone utilized that piece of legislation. That's why it sat there for many, many years. Also, each time I've been put back in office, I've raised my hand, just like our police officers have raised your hand, all of us. Any elected official, that we would uphold the Constitution of the United States and also the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. also the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I was looking over those laws. What we could do as a council is a resolution asking the state if they could do something with the bill that's at the table right now. However, it's not in a resolution. It's in law form, and it's basically the same thing as 1993. No matter how you turn it or how many amendments you make to this piece of legislation, unless it is a resolution asking the state to vote on this, then I can't vote. Because, again, this is a piece of legislation that only the state can vote on. The rule and the laws, and this goes even for our police officers, no county, municipality or township may in any manner regulate lawful ownership, possession, transfer or transportation of firearms, ammunition or ammunition components when carried or transported for purposes not prohibited by the laws of the Commonwealth. And it also states that if we do vote on something here because the state is saying in the laws, that this is not something of ours to vote on. Any offense under the subchapter constitutes a misdemeanor of the first degree, and of the first degree a misdemeanor provides for a maximum of five years. Any city official who impedes another to exercise or the enjoyment of any right or privilege is guilty of official oppression, which is a misdemeanor of the second degree. If you go back and check, my slate is clean. I feel that I was very serious when I raised my hand to be in this seat right now, and that is why I have to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, anyone else for first round? Mr. Coghill.
Okay. First, I want to say, you know, Councilman O'Connor, you had a lot of respect for him before this, but I have even more respect for you now. You know, he's been strong, steadfast in this, and, you know, there's something about somebody that stands up for something, and he's been in the face of, everybody's been in his face about this. So, so, you know, I really have a lot of respect for that. And, you know, I think everybody realizes that, you know, the legal aspects in this, it's more about bringing awareness to it, I felt, and I think this guy's brought more awareness to it in, forever, as far as I know, as far as gun rights go, and, you know, limitations on it. So I just want to commend him for that. You know, whether it's voted up or down today, I believe it was a good thing just to have the people at the table. I certainly learned a lot from this process, I'll tell you, you know, and it's occupied my mind a lot, too. So now we're at a fork in the road, obviously, you know, to choose whether to go down that road or not is something I've been struggling with, and I just want to mention a few things that, you know, that stick to me every night almost, is the uncertainty of what's going to cost a city. To me, you know, my focus is, I didn't think I'd be here, you know, even debating this issue, but my focus is going to be on, you know, infrastructure, abandoned buildings, floods, you know, I can go on and on. It's just, you know, a lot of things that I want to keep focused on. So the dollar amount, and if two years from now, if it costs a city, whether it be $200,000 or $2 million in lawsuits, I'm going to have a hard time going to my constituents and saying, well, this building we couldn't remove for $50,000, but, you know, we fought this in court for that reason. Another thing is friends, you know, I have a lot of friends who are hunters and police officers, and I try to tell them, and I know from talking to Councilman O'Connor, he is not allowed to take your hunting rifle away. He's not allowed to take your protection of your pistol at home. But I could say and tell him blue in the face, but they see it as a step for us to remove all guns. And some of them even believe the government's going to come and remove their guns from their home someday, so. And I understand that to a certain degree, but I disagree with that, but, you know, I do understand that. And, you know, things is like the Fourth Division, I'm trying, you know, the Fourth Public Works Division, I'm trying to get built. One of my concerns was that Councilman Kraus-Hare, who are Council President, he's a multitasker, but just the distraction of this to me worries that we're not on pace to do that. And that, to me, is the most important thing at this time. So, again, I want to thank Councilman O'Connor. I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger and all those, you know, who fight for this. I do believe in reform. At this time, though, I'm not going to choose to go down that road. You know, I think it's better for me just to focus on the things that I know best, and I'll be voting no for it. Sorry to say.
Ms. Gross.
Thank you. I just want the sponsors to know that I'm fully supportive. I appreciate your leadership, your hard work, your staff's work, and I appreciate also the fact that I had a lot of conversations with constituents, and especially compared to the first draft that was submitted. I think that the amendments have addressed a lot of the concerns of the people who I knew are gun owners in my district, who went through the legislation with me line by line. And so I'm fully supportive of the amendments today, and I do think it's important, and I think that I see state legislatures standing, sitting up a little taller, at least, if they're not fully standing up. And it's important that we engage in this dialogue, and I hope that Harrisburg works with us, and I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Ms. Gross. President.
Thank you. Time and time and time and time again, over the years that I've served on this council, I have seen this council take stands that require great courage and intestinal fortitude to challenge what may not ultimately be in the best interest of the constituency that we serve. And those are not easy tasks for any of us. Courage takes great ability to step out of our comfort zone and take risk and fight for change when we see injustices that harm those that we're sworn to represent. And it isn't an easy task to do. Again, it takes great courage to be able to do that, but I think we have an obligation and a duty to do that. Time and time again in history, throughout history, this great nation, the changes that we see effectuated today happened because people had the courage to say no and no more. And though this may be considered to be legally justifiable, it is not morally justifiable, and that we have a duty to step up and stand up and fight for what we believe is morally right. And so in that spirit today, I'll be casting my vote in favor of the, of the bills. I will also chime in and congratulate the sponsors of the bills. I will congratulate the members of council that have chosen to sign on to the bill, and at the same time, I will respect the council members that have decided not to support this bill. That does not mean that in the week ahead, I will not continue to see if I cannot sway that opinion. But for today, I will be voting in favor, and I will be supporting these bills because it is a matter of moral courage. And it's calling, it's calling from the grave today. Stand up and do what's right. Thank you.
I want to congratulate Mr. Connor and Ms. Strasburger on their great courage, and I'm grateful to be a part of their coalition and to work with them on this. Over the last few weeks and months and even days, various people have talked to me about the importance of some act of violence, whether it's the tree of life, or whether it's violence in the urban core, or whether it was the Antoine Rose shooting. And, and depending on their perspective, they began to tell me which one of these incidents was most significant. But I've only been an elected official for the last 12 years. I have been the pastor of a church and a preacher of the gospel for 35 years. I believe, I believe, I believe every soul is precious in God's sight. Therefore, I believe the message, regardless of voting, the message that we should leave here with is the message that we all can agree on as a city and as a region, that we must all work together to reduce all acts of gun violence, whether they be homicide, suicide, domestic abuse, mass shootings, or police-related shootings. That's something we can all agree on, and that should be the work. That is our task. Very well said. So with that, we will have this by roll call vote.
Mr. Coghill.
No.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
No.
President Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
No.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Six ayes, three noes. Bill passes.
Thank you very much. Again, congratulations on the bill sponsor. That takes us to Public Works Committee, which Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1495, resolution granting unto Chipper LLC their successors, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing and concrete heated sidewalk at 5126 Butler Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District.
I need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation?
I'll defer. Is this?
Very supportive. Thank you.
No other conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1496, resolution granting unto Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 401 Wood Street in the 1st District, 6th Council District.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
You're a second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1498, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from Smart Growth America to be used for participation in the Safe Streets Smart Cities Academy, not to exceed $8,000 for this stated purpose. Additionally, the city will provide matching funds not to exceed $8,000 in order to receive said grant to be used for the same purpose.
I think that's bill, that's okay. That's bill, that's right. That's bill 1498.
I skipped one.
We're 1498. Still need a motion, Ms. Smith.
A motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation?
Any conversation?
No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Uh, Ms. Harris.
I want to abstain on 1496 until I get some information.
Okay, we'll change that to an extension.
So noted.
So noted, that'll take us to 1497.
Yes. 1497, I skipped. Resolution granting unto Nick DCO their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 2517 and 2519 Penn Avenue in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1371, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Carrick Municipal Hall located at 1806 Brownsville Road in the 29th Ward.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conver, Ms. Coghill.
I just want to add, this is a beautiful building. I don't know if you had a chance to see it. Yeah, it's on Brownsville Road in Carrick. A woman took, it's a bridal shop now. She redid the whole thing. It's absolutely gorgeous. I'm not typically in support of the historic commission to come in and designate something at the will, against the will of the owners, but the owners were in full support of this, so it was a no-brainer. Thanks.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. We have a new paper.
Bill 1492, resolution approving a conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title 9, zoning Article 5 for West Liberty Elementary School for authorization to expand an elementary, secondary school at 785 Dunster Street. Zone RID, R1DM residential, single unit detached, moderate density, District 19 Ward, Council District 4.
Ms. Gross, I need a motion to hold for a public hearing.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Need a second.
Second.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. We're on Bill 1493, page 7 of your agenda. New paper, please.
Bill 1493, ordinance amending to Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Article 1, encroachment, permit required, public right-of-way encroachment to allow one-step program ramps to be installed without council approval.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to discuss. Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
A second. Ms. Gross.
Yeah, so I just want to call colleagues' attention to this. So as you just noticed, we voted on several of the ramps, and so I'm willing to hold this until you have a chance. We've had a lot of big legislation in front of us. And so I think that what we have to discuss here is, is there a process with which we'd be comfortable that would expedite this for businesses, but still provide enough comfort for, you know, neighboring businesses to make sure? So I'm happy to hold. I'll motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
He wanted to.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yeah, absolutely.
Please, just briefly, thank you. So I do agree, and I'm happy to support today. And also, I've been getting a number of questions about who might possibly be the new city's ADA coordinator with the passing of Richard Meritzer. I'm going to do some research on that. I'll report back to the council. But I've been almost inundated with requests as to who's going to fill an unbelievably important position, and how do you match the caliber of a Richard Meritzer to fill that position? So I just wanted to let you know that I'm on that, and I'll be reporting back to the council.
Ms. Gross, your motion now is in order.
So, yes, yes, but I'll just make a comment if you don't mind. So absolutely, so we have also seen, I just want to also emphasize, I think we're seeing a lot more participation in this, an interest in this program, and maybe because it's more businesses or businesses changing hands or Main Streets having improvements. And so I'll look forward to having the conversation, and I think what's in front of us is our opportunity, really, to make a lot of our Main Street businesses more accessible. So with that, I'll motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Any conversation on the hold? No conversation on the hold? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. That takes us to the Innovation Performance and Assets Management Committee.
Bill 1494.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, no, I'm skipping.
Bill 1494, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to enter into a fellowship participation agreement with Student Conservation Association, Inc., of Pittsburgh, not to exceed $15,583.78 for fiscal year 2019.
Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
And so this is one that we've seen before. I don't know about anyone else, but I'm always enthusiastic to see the people in the summer building trails and doing work in our parks, and it's just an all-around fantastic program, and I'm grateful to, to the participation.
Any other conversation? Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I'd just like to see the list so that it's equally from all of our districts.
I'll be happy to ask about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Opposed, there's nay. Now, that takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management Committee. Ms. Strasburger is the chair.
Bill 1499, resolution, amending resolution number 149, which authorizes a city to enter into an agreement with EDOC Technologies LLC for licensing services and maintenance and support services to update the scope of work and to add to the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service as a signatory as an additional cost not to exceed $79,760.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. That takes us to the last committee of the day, but fast-moving agenda, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Connor is the chair.
Bill 1513, resolution adopting plan revision to the cities of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities for Aylesboro Town Homes alone, Aylesboro Avenue.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation, Mr. Connor? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Brings us to the last bill of the day. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 983, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to execute a quitclaim deed and any other necessary or appropriate documents conveying as is all the city rights, title, and interests of any designated city-owned properties to the URA for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and director of the Department of Finance, first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveniences, and further setting forth the rights and obligation of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor.
Motion to hold two weeks.
You're a second.
Second.
Any conversation on the hold? No conversation on the hold? All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. One announcement.
I'll wait for your motion.
One announcement, this afternoon at 1:30, council members will hold an executive session with the city law department on pending legal matters. Mr. Gross.
Councilman O'Connor, would it be to your liking to schedule briefings on that bill?
I believe that's the one.
On the, the last bill, 983.
We can, but I believe this is the property in Councilwoman Gross's district that's just in a weird title.
It's a single property, it's not a policy change?
Correct.
Okay, I feel much better about it, okay.
It's a strange title. I'll double-check, but yeah.
Okay.
Please. Chief Gilman's working on it with the law department, and they just need some more time, they've been very busy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other conversa, any other motions or resolutions? Seeing no, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just, when I seen it, I'm glad that he's holding it for two weeks, because I don't want everything going over. If this is one, I'm fine.
Yeah, it's, okay.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Assemoved.
Second.
All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. We are adjourned.